Best practice. And knowing Hollis Miller, who in the past has served the school district. And I've worked with Hollis Miller myself through SLU for probably the past 10 years. And they've worked with our classes and helping to train our future administrators. They have great capacity as related to working with you on the community engagement process. They can, they have the ability to really significantly impact that for you. And that's a part of the, generally that's a part of the services that they can offer you. Sometimes they're separate by fee. But that is something that you would want to look at, in my opinion. And obviously, you'd be very interested in their expertise this way. And because it's going to be very important that you do engage your community, your stakeholders, in the process. And the sooner the better. And I'd be happy to visit with anyone additionally about that aspect of it. I've used it myself over the years. As a superintendent of schools, I probably worked with seven different construction projects on 16 different buildings. And I can guarantee you the ability to work with an architect that has that feature is really important.
And having that architect involved, I mean, they're going to have, as you kind of mentioned, the expertise available to kind of run that process in terms of when you have the community in the forum, in terms of working through that process, being able to identify, you know, the projects, and they can kind of talk and drill down in terms of what's really needed. So every time I've seen the community engagement process, I've always seen the architect be a main driver of the entire process. Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, let's welcome Dr. Young.
Hello.
Hello.
Where do you want to be?
Wherever you want to be.
I'll be there.
The man of the hour.
Very good. Well, I've given you a document, which I am not going to go through. A lot of what is in that document is here in the PowerPoint, okay? That's so that it has all the written out details, so you can take that home and study it, bring it back, use it whenever you want to. You'll notice in the first part of it, you see properties of your board policy and those items that are highlighted in yellow. Those are particular things in the board policy that you should pay special attention to. And I think there's four parts, you'll see red. That is the language that I believe needs to be in your board policy about the end of proceedings, okay? It really begins the issue of a vote is always a vote of those present and voting. If you're present and you choose not to vote because you abstain, you're not counted in the vote. But if you say just the majority of those present, you take away everybody's right to abstain. So unless you're dealing with the issue of a majority of those, like given a contract or something, a majority is always a majority of those present and voting, okay? If you abstain, you didn't vote. That's what abstention means, "I don't vote, let the others decide." And that's just a spot that I think is important for you to include in your board policy. So let's move forward here. And let me start by talking about a few definitions. Now, a meeting of the board, we tend to get sloppy about our terminology, and I want to make this clear. Tonight, you're having a meeting of the board, okay? In parliamentary terms, a meeting and a session are not always the same thing. A meeting is a single official gathering. That's the key. We're at one point, and we, you know, we go through the agenda. A session, in the case of the school board, is exactly the same thing. Now, if you were going to a convention where you had five days of business meetings, each day you might have a meeting, but the whole week is a session, okay? But since you meet once a month or twice a month, each time you meet, you go through the entire agenda, right? Call the meeting, the order, and adjourn at the end, and go through all the items. So your meetings are sessions. And the reason I made that point is, there are things, the effect of which expire at the end of a session. For example, let's suppose that you said, "For the remainder of this session, I move that debate be limited to two minutes per speaker." But at the end of the night, that expires. The next session, that doesn't pertain, unless you adopt a special rule of order in your board policy that has ongoing effect, okay? So I just want to make that point, because you'll hear me talk about session quite a bit, and I just don't want you to be confused about the two. Also, a recess, I think you know what that is. Everybody from kindergarten on knows what recess is, you know? In a parliamentary sense, it means we take a break in the proceedings. And then we go get something to drink, we all go to the restroom, we do whatever we need to do. And usually, it's for a specified time, like we're going to recess for 10 minutes, or we're going to recess until the chair calls us back, okay? And then adjourn, now, this is another term you may not be familiar with, but it's a good one for the president to know. Let's suppose that for just a moment in the meeting, the president needs to consult with the attorney, but it's just a very brief consultation, or she needs to speak to the superintendent, or whatever it is. But you don't want to break the meeting and take a recess. She can say, "Would you just stand at ease for a moment?" Now, that doesn't mean you have to get up. It just means, "Stay where you are, I'm going to, I'm going to take off here for a minute, I'm going to talk." So you lean over to the superintendent, or whoever it is you need to talk to, and you come back and say, "All right, now, I've got that information," and you move forward. If that sounds to you like a military term, it's because it is a military term. And it comes because the writer of Robert's Rules of Order was General Henry Martin Robert. General Robert was an engineer, he was the head of the Army Corps of Engineers. And he did most of his writing in the 1800s. The first edition came out in 1876. And I've just finished writing a biography of General Robert that, as of today, is on eBay. You can get the electronic book, or you can get it, but you've got to type Henry Martin, M-A-R-T-Y-N, Robert to find it. It's the first biography ever written of the general. And it's going to be released next week in Las Vegas at the National Association of Parliamentarians Convention, which I'm a past president of, yeah. It's an important piece of historical research. It's got about 600 footnotes in it, so it's well documented. And it's also a very interesting read about a man. And particularly, I think you will appreciate this one thing, and I'll just make a little aside here. General Robert was born in Robertville, South Carolina. So, and he went to the U.S. Military Academy at West Point in 1857, excuse me, graduated in 1857. And you know who the superintendent of West Point was in that time? It was Robert E. Lee. It was Robert E. Lee, yeah. So you would have thought Martin would have gone with the South, wouldn't you? But his father, Joseph Thomas Roberts, was a Baptist minister. And when he inherited the plantation in Robertville, he, being totally opposed to the institution of slavery, paid to free all of his slaves, because the state actually required him to pay a penalty to do that. And he paid to send all of those folks to Ohio and resettle. And then he sold the plantation and moved his family to Ohio, because he wanted his kids to go on a slave operation. And after the war, he came back to Augusta, Georgia, and founded the Augusta Baptist Seminary, which later was moved under big leadership to Atlanta, became the Atlanta Baptist Seminary. Does anybody know what it's called today? Morehouse College. General Robert's father is the founder of Morehouse College. You know, it was originally founded to teach freedmen to be ministers. That was the original seminary. Well, of course, General Robert, you can see now why he would go with the North, a couple of percent, okay? Well, I'll get off. So if you're, like that, it looks like a military term, and it's because it is a military term. Yes? Yes. What policy says objection? Well, General, what you do is, the chair would say, "If there's no objection, let's take a recess for 10 minutes." The board looks around the room, "Hearing no objection, we're in recess." Because it's really an action of the assembly. It's hard to believe that body of water, you know, and then going on running. It's really an action. So the best way to do it, as the chair is, is to say, "There's no objection." Now, what if somebody objects? Then you put it through a vote. And a simple majority, majority of those present and voting will decide. The same thing is true of adjournment with slight alteration. There's actually two times when the president can adjourn the meeting without a vote. One is in the case of fire, riot, you know, substantial disorder, you know, if everyone went nuts, you don't want to have to stand around for the vote. Where the other is, when there's no further business. So when you get to the agenda, the chair says, "Is there any further business that comes before the board?" Hearing no further business, we will be adjourned, giving them all the chance in the world to offer whatever it is they want to offer. Hearing no further business, the meeting is adjourned, and you don't actually have to take a vote then, okay? Any other time, it requires a vote, the adjourn. Okay? And that's where I was coming next, was adjournment. We just answered that question, so I'm going to move on. That's the end of the session. A motion is nothing more than a proposal. You're making a proposal to the board that it takes certain action, okay? And when you make a motion, you should always make it in this way. You should say, "I move that." "I move that we buy playground equipment for X, Y, Z elementary school. I move that we approve the following resolution." You've written that resolution out. So the basic form is the main motion, and that's the only thing that brings business before you. So when you're in a meeting, and you want to bring business before the board, it takes a motion. Now, a lot of times, good boards, and I know you all do this, the motions have been thought about and written out ahead of time in the documentation that you have received. And so you might say, "I move the adoption of Resolution 123." It's got a number or a title. In that case, everybody's got it printed in front of them, you don't necessarily have to read the whole thing, because you know that resolutions and motions sometimes can be quite long. It'd be very tedious to read them. The only advantage to reading them is for people who are watching you remotely, because they can't see the piece of paper that you are referring to, okay? So you might think about that, but you really want those watching to understand, it's pretty important that the motion be read. It can be read by the president, it can be read by the secretary, or by the person who's moving it. Yes, ma'am? Sure, it's always appropriate, okay? And any member could demand that it be read, if you didn't read it. But if everybody can see it, and we all know what it is, you don't have to read it. Yes, ma'am?
Is it okay for the president to read the motion?
Well, actually, it is. Let me tell you how that works, because this is something that gets a little bit into Missouri law, and the attorneys can tell you a little bit more about that too. But in Congress, when they elect somebody the Speaker of the House of Representatives, that doesn't mean they take away his right to vote for his constituents. Now, what he does is, if there's a roll call vote, he chooses to vote, the president always votes last. So you call the roll, General Robert says you do it in alphabetical order, and the president is always called last. Because if the president's vote isn't going to affect the results, they may not, they may choose not to vote in harsh hour. But their constituents may want to see how the president voted, you see? So if you take in a roll call vote, it's entirely up to you whether your vote is a done or abstained. You know, vote. And of course, then, if there's all seven presidents, and the president doesn't vote, what's the majority of six? Still four, it's the majority of six. If only five votes, then the majority is true, you know? It changes depending on how many are voted, okay? Now, this is exactly what I want to do tonight. If you have a question, ask it, because if you save it to the end, you're going to forget it. You know, when it comes up in your mind, ask the question, okay? All right, so a main motion... Be a sir, Mr. President. All right, well, first of all, you are not required in the state of Missouri to do roll call votes, except in what? Executive session, in closed session. You have to do everything by roll call vote. And you have to take a roll call vote to go into executive session, and a roll call vote to come out of the executive session, right? Everything by roll call vote in executive session. Other than that, you are not required to do that. Now, many boards choose on most items not call the roll. They just say, "All those in favor, show your hands." "Thank you." "All those opposed, show your hands." Or "All those in favor say aye." "All those opposed, say no." And the chair declares what it is. But in those cases, you don't record the number of votes, because you don't know the number. Now, you may know, you may have looked around and seen, but you don't say there are four in favor and two opposed. You only do that if you actually count the vote, okay? That's a roll call vote, all right? Otherwise, you said, the chair says, "There's a majority in the affirmative, and the motion is passed." Or "There's a majority in the negative, and the motion is lost," okay? I don't encourage boards to do everything by roll call, because it just eats up a lot of time.
It tears up the time.
Takes up a lot of time to do that. You're not required to do it, but the reason for doing a roll call vote is so your constituents know how you voted on crucial issues. So if it's an important matter, that's liable to be maybe controversial, I think you should take a roll call vote, because you want to be on record as to how you voted when they want to ask you about that, okay? Now, what is, that's the most public way to vote, is by roll call, because you put your name to it. In the minutes, it says, you know, "Mr. Brooks voted yes. Ms. Briggs voted no." You know, it'll say right in there how you voted, if it's a roll call vote.
And now, it does, it's just that way, too.
Yeah. And if it's, if it's a aye or no vote, or just a hand vote, all it says in the minutes is, "There was a majority in the affirmative, and the motion was adopted."
When, 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 as, if it's a voice vote, someone can ask that the, the, "Mr. President, can I, can I ask you, can I request your hand up, your badge, the house, the page?" When you want, when you want to know whether or not the voice vote did carry, you question it, so then you ask for a...
So let's say we do it this way. The chair says, "All those in favor say aye." "Aye." "All those opposed, say no." "No." And you, and the chair says, "There's a majority in affirmative, and the motion is carried." And you don't think there was a majority in it. That's what you're asking, right? Then you say, "I ask for a division." And all you do then is ask, that turns the voice vote into a show of hands, and you can see for sure, on the seven people, how many are in for it and how many are opposed. Yes, sir? I can see a name, I don't know your name.
I'm sorry, Taylor.
Mr. Taylor, yeah.
Can individual member call for a roll call vote?
According to Robert's Rules of Order, now, that's what I'm basing this on, which, because 98% of everybody says Roberts is the authority on these things. But unless your board has actually adopted Robert's Rules of Order as your parliamentary authority, it is not final. It's suggested, okay? That's why I recommend, and so does MSBA, that school districts adopt Robert's Rules of Order. Because if you get into a tough situation, you have to have a final authority to appeal to, okay? Now, let me tell you what Robert says about your question. If you, the normal way to do a vote, Robert says, is by voice, or by show of hands in small groups, or rising in a large group, but show of hands is fine for you. And then, the next step would be a roll call vote. And if the chair, the chair determines what kind of vote to take. It's up to the chair to determine that. So she will decide how she's going to take the vote. And if you, and she says, "We're going to take this, all those in favor say aye, and you say, 'I want a roll call vote,' you know, then the chair would say, "Is there any objection to taking a roll call vote?" No one objects, we do. If someone objects, a majority vote will decide how the vote is taken.
You have to push the number of votes.
Yeah. You want to go on record, yeah. Yeah, that's the purpose of a roll call vote. And individuals cannot demand a roll call vote. Now, if we're all working together as colleagues, if somebody wants a roll call vote on a particular topic, I think that accommodates, you know? Why make trouble over something you don't need to make trouble with, you know? That's what I say. But you can't force the chair to take a roll call vote. You can force the chair to take a voice vote again as a show of hands. All you have to do is say, "I request a division," okay? Or you could say, "I request a roll call vote," and I think the chair would probably grant that, do it that way, okay? That's what Robert says. All right, so once you've adopted a main motion, it's the board's official statement. No matter how many people vote for it or against it, you got a majority, it's the board's position at that point, okay? Now, we move on. You can only have one main question at a time. Obviously, that makes sense. You can't deal with playground equipment and bond issues at the same time. They're different questions. The same or substantial same question cannot be twice considered during a session. So if, let's say, early after this presentation on the bond issue, you voted to do whatever you do about bond issues, you voted to retain this company. During the same meeting, you can't turn around and say, "Oh, no, we're going to retain that company." Once you've decided it during that session, the only way to change your mind is to move to reconsider it. And we'll come to reconsider after a while, okay? Basically, it says, "You only entertain the topic once during the..." Okay? All right. If a main motion's been temporarily disposed of, then the same or substantially the same cannot be brought up. What I mean by that is, if you refer it to a committee, while the committee's deliberating until they report, it's still in the control of the assembly, so you don't make a motion to do something else while that's going on. Or if you postpone something from one meeting to the next, until you get to it in the next month's agenda, you can't do something else, okay? Because it's still under the control of the assembly. It's been temporarily disposed of. And lastly, once a motion's been adopted, you cannot make the same motion again unless you reconsider it or rescind it. And I'll talk about those later on, because they are very important to school board members. Matter of fact, my most frequent question, I think most of you know that I'm the parliamentarian for the Missouri School Boards Association, I've been for about 25 years now, long time. And so, they always advertise that I'm available, if you've got an individual consultation, you know, you need help with something, call me, better than that email, because you can give it to me in writing, I can give it to you in writing, you know what I mean? And you've got it, definitely answered to your question. Why did I tell you that?
Most frequent question that you had always been...
Oh, the most frequent question I get is, "Last month, we did whatever we wanted. But in the interim, we've thought that over, and now we'd like to change our mind, how do we do that?" Now, with that, with the subtext, everybody in the community went nuts and called us on the phone. And now, we realized this was a bonehead move, and we need to fix it, okay? And so usually, they'll say, "How can we reconsider it?" And I say, "You can't." And then they go like this, and I said, "But there's always a way, because you can later rescind it." I'm going to talk about this too, here, just in a little while. All right, now, why do we have a second? A second there does not mean they're in favor of the motion. A perfectly good reason to second it is you want to see the board voted down, okay? All you're saying when you second a motion is, "I want to hear it discussed." Because if you don't get a second, it doesn't come before the board. It doesn't die for lack of a second, because it never got alive. It's, it just doesn't come before the board. And if it doesn't come before the board, it's not in the minutes. It doesn't appear in the minutes. Now, descriptive characteristics, so you're asking yourself, "Is the motion debatable?" Well, it is if it has a variable. If it doesn't have a variable, there's nothing to amend. It's got to have something you can change it. And is it amendable? Is it debatable? All main motions are debatable, there are some of the subsidiary motions that are not. And what vote does it take? Well, it takes a majority vote to adopt the main question, except in Missouri, when you're dealing with things like giving a contract, or, there's one other exception. What is it? Hiring, it's hiring people, giving a contract. And they require an absolute majority of the board, which means four votes, no matter how many people are present. You've got to get at least four votes, okay, in that case.
The majority of the whole board.
It's the majority of the whole board, whether or not they're all present, and whether or not any of them sustain, you still need four, or abstain, you still need four votes, okay? And can you reconsider it? Well, some motions can be reconsidered, like main motions, but other things cannot. And can you interrupt the order of proceeding to make your motion? Well, certainly not for a main motion, but if you wanted to raise a point of order, that some infraction of the rules had occurred, you can interrupt a speaker to do that. There's very few of those.
To reconsider, it's a four to three vote. The action was a four to three vote. Who can reconsider that? Say, either, does it have to be reconsidered at that meeting, or be reconsidered at a later meeting? Either way, who has to be the one to reconsider it?
You can only reconsider an action on the same night in which it's adopted. After that, you have to rescind it or amend it, which is a different process. The only persons who can move reconsideration are those who voted on the prevailing side. So if you passed it, you must have voted yes. If it failed, you must have voted no. Why? Because you've got to show that at least one guy has changed his mind. If nobody's changed their mind, why would we bother reconsider it, okay? So if earlier in the meeting, let me give you an example, we'd adopted some spending thing, and the treasurer, or whoever the financial manager was, is late for the meeting, wasn't there when we did that, and comes in and says, "Oh, my gosh, you did that, we don't have enough money for that." And talks to a couple of board members who voted in favor, and one of them says, "Madam President, I move we reconsider the vote on whatever it was, and by second and a majority vote, we can take a second look at it, okay, with the new added information that we may not have had before." But that's on the same night. Now, if you were in a convention of five days, you can reconsider it on the same or the next calendar day. But you don't meet two successive days in a row, do you? Meet on Wednesday and Thursday, or Thursday and Friday, you know, you meet once a month. So you can't reconsider it beyond the end of the current session. All right, small boards. Roberts gives a few little rules for small boards, some of which I think are a good idea, and some of which I don't think are a very good idea. And I'm going to explain. Now, these are, these are his thoughts, these are not absolutes. Number one, a main motion can be amended, referred, postponed, laid on the table, you can close debate on it, you can do any of those things, but the main motion is pending, right? So let's say you've had an hour discussion on this, and everybody's really talked, and you're tired of it, you can get the attention of the chair, get recognized, and say, "I move the previous question." Or some people like to say, "I called the question." It doesn't make any difference, it still takes a two-thirds vote. Why? Because we're taking away people's rights. Because we're taking away people's rights now, and so it's gonna take a really large vote to do it. You notice I didn't say a two-thirds majority? There is no such thing as a two-thirds majority. There is a majority, which means more than half, or there's a two-thirds vote, which means two out of every three. Now, in the presentation you saw a minute ago, there was a whole lot of stuff over here about four-fifths majority and two-thirds majority, and I was gonna make a point of order, but I thought better of it during, during the meeting. But that's, that's common usage, isn't it? People talk like that all the time. Okay, but I like suggest to you that it takes a two-thirds vote, not a two-thirds majority. Just majority and two-thirds, not the same thing. Okay, we've talked about roll call voting, usually alphabetical with the president called last. Uh, in small boards, we often use unanimous consent. Now, you can tell with seven members, you get to know each other pretty well, working around a board table. And you get an item, and it's proposed, and you talk about it, and you, you just have a sense, if you're in the chair, that there's no opposition to this. So rather than go through the formality of a vote, you vote by what's called a unanimous consent. The chair says, alright, we've had opportunity to consider this, is there any objection to this being approved? Now, you should not be afraid, if you're a board member, to say, yes, I object, and then we do it in a formal way. But if you adopt something by unanimous consent, which is way better than a majority vote, isn't it? Because nobody said no, you know, and you save a lot of time. That's the way, for example, minutes should be approved. You have before you the minutes of the January meeting, are there any corrections to these minutes? Hearing no corrections, the minutes are approved. We just did it by unanimous consent. We gave everybody a chance to make their correction, they didn't have any, so we.
But if they, if they would say, Madam President, I still move.
Then you can take a second and vote on it, it's certainly not wrong, you know, just extra wasted time. Okay? Um, the presiding officer says, if there's no objection, and pauses to allow for objection, then proceeds to declare whatever it is. That's what we call unanimous consent. Okay, now you have to be careful with that, that you don't railroad things. You don't push it too fast, or push it inappropriately. You know, if people wanna talk about it, or they wanna vote on it, you need to give them a chance. Okay, how do we handle a simple motion? Well, somebody's gonna make it, I move that we buy the secretary a desk and a chair. See, she's way over there, we're gonna buy her a desk and a chair to sit over here. Okay? Another member seconds the motion, I've already explained why, because you wanna see it discussed. The chair then states the question, this is the one that usually gets slid over. Chair says, it's moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution A. Is there any debate? Or you can use the word discussion, if you, is there any discussion? And now, it's been moved and seconded and stated by the chair, and now it belongs to the board. It's open for anybody who wants to make, you know, that you gotta get recognized, of course. Uh, but you get the opportunity to debate the question. Okay? And, you know. Yes, ma'am.
After you, uh, the, what I said, the chair states the question, don't you usually say, is there a discussion? Before you go, I don't hear that a lot, but.
Well, that, that's what I was just saying, you'd say, it's moved and seconded that we approve Resolution A, is there any discussion? Now then, people discuss, and the chair sees the discussion kind of wind, winding up. You can kinda tell when people have run out of gas on a topic. And the chair says, if there's no further discussion, we'll take the vote, is there any further discussion? Now, hearing none, then, the chair puts the question. But what if you, as a board member, we've had three hours of debate on this topic? And you, and everybody said the same thing over and over a half dozen times. And the chair is not calling for the vote, what can you do? You can move the previous question, or some people say, call the question. And in that case, the chair says, is there a second to the previous question? Yes, there is. Alright, the previous question is not debatable, the question is, shall we now close debate and vote? And it takes a two-thirds vote to order that the vote be taken. Now, I think it's important to say it the way I said it. See, if you read Roberts, Roberts says, this is what you say. I move the previous question, second. Previous question is moved and seconded, as many of you are in favor of the previous question will rise. And people are going, what the heck are we doing? Because they don't understand if you're voting, whether you're ready to vote, or you're voting on the issue. So, so forget all that gobbledygook, and speak English, plain English. Somebody says, I call the question, is there a second? Second. It's moved and seconded that we close debate and vote. All those who are ready to close debate and vote, show your hands. Thank you. Those who are not ready to close debate and vote, show your hands. Thank you. There are two-thirds who are ready, and now the question is on, and you put the question to vote. Okay? Don't be afraid to vote against the previous question if you don't think there's been enough discussion. But don't be afraid to move the previous question if you think people are just beating up their gums, and the issue's been adequately discussed. Okay? I would not be the quick guy on the trigger to jump that, you know, just right away, quick. It's not a way to shut people up, it's a way to move on at a reasonable pace. Okay? Alright, where are we next? And now, after the chair takes the vote, you take the affirmative vote first, you take the negative vote second, and then you announce the results. And this one's really important, you know, because this would be like, uh, we got the election coming up in 2020, you know, and, and, uh, the, the person on TV comes on and says, well, we've got the election results, Trump won again, or Trump lost, whatever it is, just trust us on this. And it won't tell you any numbers. Well, nobody's gonna put up with that, of course, not at all. Well, the same thing's true here. If you count the vote, the chair will say, there are four in favor and three opposed. The motion is carried, and we will buy the playground equipment, whatever it is, or Resolution A is adopted. And then you move on, or there were three in favor and two against, or whatever the numbers are. But you only announce numbers if you actually count them. Okay, which will be the roll call. Otherwise, the minutes just say, there was a majority in favor, and the chair says, looks around, says, there's a majority in favor and the motion is adopted. Unless somebody says, division, you move on. Does that make sense? I don't mean to run too fast, I just don't have a limited amount of time here tonight, and I wanna get a lot of stuff in. Now, if you wanna make an amendment, this is the thing that I see boards struggle with all the time. There's a proposal in front of us, and I like most of it. There's, there's five things, and there's only one part of it I don't like. Well, you don't have to just vote against the whole thing, you can move to amend it by striking that one part out, or changing that one part's wording. An amendment is nothing more than a change in the wording. Okay? So, an amendment should state exactly what you wanna do, what words you wanna strike out, and what words you wanna put in their place. Okay? And amendments always have to be voted on before the main question is voted on, 'cause we have to know what form it's in before we finally adopt it. Makes sense? Okay, question? Mr. Reagan?
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Brooks?
I, I have a question.
No, I, I've got mine on my brain.
Uh, um, do, do, does the maker of the amendment have to get permission from the maker of the motion, original motion?
Oh, not at all. The whole purpose of an amendment is to change that original motion. You don't have to get anybody's permission, and they do have to get a second to your amendment, to get it on the floor. Yes, Mr. Reagan?
And does it have to be at the beginning, uh, before we start opening it up, or?
No, no, wha- after it's moved and seconded and the chair stated, and while we're debating it, that's the time you offer amendments. During debate, during discussion. Okay? Alright, so let's say that our, our main motion, for example, tonight, is that we sponsor a delegate to the Missouri School Boards Association Convention in June. Alright, that's our, that's our motion, it's been moved and seconded, and it's before the board. Now, what does sponsor mean? You're gonna pay their expenses. Right? Okay, now, you heard, although the thing is usually in June, but this year it's actually gonna be in May. So you move to amend the motion by striking out the words "in June." Why would you wanna send them in June if the thing's in, in May, right? That's just an amendment to strike out certain words. Or, let's suppose that you like the idea of sponsoring a delegate, but you wanna cap their expenses. So you move to amend by adding the words "with expenses not to exceed a hundred and fifty dollars," or whatever figure you think. That's another way to amend it, is add something to it. The third way is to strike out something and insert something in its place. That we sponsor a delegate to the MSBA convention in June. I move to strike out a delegate and insert two delegates. Assuming you're allowed two delegates, you know. So that's an example of strike out and insert. They have to be in the same place, can't strike it out here and insert something else over there. Okay? Now, primary and secondary amendments. This is, this is the famous pyramid here. The main motion is the lowest ranking motion. It can only be made when nothing else is pending, right? Okay, and when the main motion is pending, you can move an amendment to it. Any of those examples I just gave you are primary amendments. A secondary amendment is what we call an amendment to the amendment. Okay, so let me give you an example of that. Let's suppose that, um, let's see, where is this little green light? There it is. Uh, the main motion is that we sponsor a delegate to our MSBA convention in June. Okay, the primary amendment said is to add the words "with expenses not to exceed a hundred and fifty dollars." Now, you're kinda cheap, and you think, well, I, I like the idea of spending them, sending them, and I like the spending limit, a hundred and fifty's too much. We're only, I wanna give them a hundred, so I move to strike out from the amendment, a hundred and fifty, and insert a hundred. Now, I'm gonna go back, we have three motions pending. We have a main motion to send a delegate, a primary amendment to cap the spending at one fifty, and a secondary amendment to change one fifty to a hundred. Now, which one of those we gonna vote on first?
Secondary.
Yeah, you're gonna start in reverse order. This one's gonna get voted on first, then this one's gonna get voted on as it may have been proposed, or as it may have been amended, and then this one's gonna be voted on. In, in reverse order. Think of it like this. When you were a kid, you liked to climb trees, didn't you? Every kid does. Mother doesn't like it, but I did it anyway, you know? And think of the main motion as the trunk of the tree, okay? And the primary amendment is the branch. And the secondary amendment, twig. And you can only have one of each. If I love the main motion, I can climb out of the tree. But if you wanna go out of branch over here, what you gotta do? Gotta come in from this twig, you gotta come in from this branch, then you can go out over here. You can have lots of amendments, but you can only have one main motion, one primary amendment, one secondary amendment at a time. You gotta vote on something, you can get back in, you can go out of somewhere else. That might be, you could get that. And you know why Roberts said it on three? Psychology, that's one. Three picks at one time. I've seen people try to get it, other makes you wanna re-. Alright, now substitute is nothing more than an amendment to strike out and insert the whole map of the board to make a change of. For example, let's suppose we have this substitute for our motion to sponsor a delegate. And we encourage all our members to attend the MSBA convention. So that's a legitimate substitute, and the effective improvement is to strike out all that other wording, insert this in its place. Substitute is a primary amendment. So while we're out here, you can't make a substitute. You gotta wait till we come into here. Now you can offer a substitute. Okay, it's a primary amendment, remember, only one of those at a time.
Right, now, well, now, there's a substitute.
Uh, this is really difficult. Then talk about, let me draw on chat. Remember I said that it has to be moved seconded and stated by the chair? It belongs to the move until it's stated by the chair. And he can withdraw her, she, at any point in that process, with nobody's permission, she doesn't have to ask Secretary or Assembly, nothing. And usually what happens is somebody makes a motion, and it's not a hundred percent clear, and the chair's trying to clarify it, and you suddenly realize your motion is, you know? And you say, I withdraw my motion. It's gone, and if it's withdrawn, Madam Secretary, it does not appear in the minutes, it never happened. Hold on, it's no just a vote on, it's made before the chair has stated the question. Now, after the chair has stated the question, the motion belongs to the board. It's the board, belongs to the whole board. Okay, now, you could, in the middle of debate, let's say Mr. Brooks made a motion, and he's listening to this debate, and he's realized, gee, this is really not a good move. And you might say, Madam President, I request permission to withdraw my motion. And the chair will say, is there any objection to letting the member withdraw his motion? Any good if he withdraws it, it does not appear in the minutes, it's as if it never happened. Okay? But if you don't want it withdrawn, you can object to that. Okay, and the chair will then put it to vote, and a majority vote will allow it to be, be withdrawn. But that's only in the case it's already pending before the assembly, to move seconded and stated by the chair. Up to that point, it belongs to the move. And it's up to them if they wanna withdraw it. Okay, rules of debate. Now, do you have any special rules on how long we can speak? I didn't recall seeing any in your board conference. Well, you do. Uh, now, let me take what Roberts said. If you don't have any other rules, and you use Roberts' Rules of Order, you may speak twice a question, ten minutes each. Now, pressure, but I think ten minutes is tiny. Now, if you have a rule, then you follow it. Okay, if the rule says three minutes per speech, one speech per person, whatever. But that's what Roberts says, if you don't have another rule, ten minutes. Now, that is a long time to debate. If all of you speak ten minutes twice, that's a hundred and forty minutes on every item. For what you wanna do is simply move that, for this item, debate you minutes, two minutes per speech. And that is not debatable, because it would be ridiculous to debate how long you wanna debate, right? It's not debatable, and it takes one vote. Taking away rights here, two-thirds, they just like the previous question, two-thirds vote. You can do that at any point you wish to do that. Now, the reason I point that out is because I think ten minutes, just because they can see themselves. If you can't make your point for two or three minutes, you don't know what you wanna say. And I think it's a good idea to have some time. Okay, now, debate must be confined in the merits of pending question. So while we're dealing with the question of sending a delegate to convention, we cannot talk about playground equipment. You have to combine your debate with what's pending. I'm talking about something else. Okay, President says, um, you now have before you, as moved and seconded, that we buy playground equipment for the X, Y, Z element. During this discussion. During that time, all the discussions, whether it's on the board, we can't talk about buses. Now, you might say, well, we can't afford a playground equipment, we've spent it all on buses. That's right, the cases, the debate has to remain irrelevant to this topic. So the chair, you know, I could probably, the chair, I could say, we're out of order, and say, Mr. Brooks, could you please combine your remarks to the question of course? Now, Mr. Brooks continues, now, and then I might say, Mr. Brooks, I'm sorry, but I'm speaking of the pending question, we're out of order. Then you have to deal with the school. You know, I always tell presiding office, be as kind as you possibly can. You know, work for these people all the time, you know, they, nobody hired you to be the sheriff. That's not what you're here for, just to celebrate the need, you know? So just gently nudge them back to getting along to the topic, get off on some of that. Number three, now, this is one I see violate the school boards all the time, and watching some of your meetings, you guys are really, really good at this one. Yeah, you don't address all your marks, the chair will do the same. Now, the, what, part of what it is, the way you're sitting doesn't help.
So they tried to accommodate with this cup thing, but then I noticed in the last meeting. with this cup thing, but then I noticed in the last meeting that some board members' arms are not long enough to put the cup up there.
Oh, I see.
Yeah. And, so, I mean, I had good glass by any time.
Well, there's another little interesting technique. They've installed, and you know, your electronics guys could do this, very easy, install a little red button in front of every seat. Now, not in front of the people who can't speak, but the board members. And in front of the president, a little pad, and it shows Mr. Reagan, Mr. Brooks, Mr., you know, it has the names of things. And you want to speak, you push that red button, and it lights up. And so, then I, I just, if I'm in the chair, I look at it, I say, Chair recognizes Mr. Brooks. And then whoever's working the thing takes that red light off, you know? Takes a little technology to do it, but that's a foolproof way to do it. And you recognize them in the order in which they're asking to be recognized. Now, if this table were set in a kind of a large semicircle U, you'd find that a lot easier as the presiding officer, because even in peripheral vision, you can see people sticking up their hand. That's hard to see when everybody's like this. So some accommodation has to be made for that. The cups, that's, that's the beginning of a way, but maybe you can find an electronic way to do that. Uh, some groups, especially larger groups, they'll have what they call a recognition card, and it's bright red, or it's bright orange, or something like that. And the person wants to speak, simply raises their hand like this, you know? And then you can see it usually. But you kind of have to look around. It's really tough for, for that kind of a straight-up setting. If I was advise boards, if they're thinking about redesigning their space, to think in view of a big horseshoe, that's, that's like a hundred and eighty-degree angle, so that the, so that the chair can really see all of the board members, and all the board members can see each other, which is equalism. Okay? All right? Other rules. Speakers must maintain a courteous tone and avoid injecting personal notes. Okay? You know, you may not like this other board member sitting next to you, but as far as working together, you are nothing but kind and generous to each other. Now, I'm gonna tell you a story, and you'll never forget it. Do you remember Ted Kennedy? Do you remember Orrin Hatch, the senator from Utah? Ultra, ultra-right, ultra-left, okay? Years ago, Kennedy went through alcohol rehab. He'd gotten addicted to alcohol, and he went into a rehab facility. And Hatch, who was a Mormon minister from Utah, he felt it was his, it was his responsibility to be supportive of Kennedy when he was going through that. So he went to see him every day during the rehab facility, all thirty days. And those two men became best friends. Now, that sounds like a strange pair, like an odd couple, doesn't it? But do you remember when they were both working actively? There would be bills sponsored by Kennedy and Hatch, or Hatch and Kennedy. They were working across the aisle. They'd get in the meeting, they'd argue strongly against the other point of view, then they went out to lunch together. Because it wasn't personal. It wasn't about, I don't like you, you don't like me. It was about the issue. We can disagree on the issue without being disagreeable with each other, you know? And I'll tell you, for people watching you on TV, if you, if you start getting disagreeable, they just, who wants to watch this? I could watch Fox News and see this, you know? I could turn on MSNBC and see this. I don't have to watch the school board, be disagreeable with each other. You know, keep your debate focused on the issue. Okay? And always, always try to be as kind as you can. Now, one of the ways you can do that is not attack other members' motives. You can say, well, I disagree with the former speaker, and here's why. But you don't say, well, the former speaker just wants this because, because she favors all the kids at her elementary school. Well, you don't know why she or he wants it. So you never want to attack a member's motives. And you should refrain from calling each other by name. Now, that doesn't go to the president. When you're recognizing somebody, you say, Chair recognizes Mrs. Graves, Chair recognizes Mr. Brooks, okay? But the rest of you ought to refer to each other as the member who previously spoke, or I disagree with the previous speaker, or da-da-da-da-da. And try to avoid, because when I call your name, it becomes personal. It just does, you know? You know, you just, you're saying, well, now Caroline just don't agree with that, and blah, 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 you know? And that's the other thing. If you talk to each other, there's no way you will keep this from devolving into personalities and into arguing. The way you do that, it's very simple. Don't call each other by name and address all your marks to the chair. If you have a question, say, Madam President, I have a question. It was the figure five hundred or five thousand? And she will decide who the appropriate person is to answer that question and direct it. Could be the superintendent, could be the finance manager, could be another member of the board, I don't know, whoever the right person is to answer the question. Now, you notice, if you watch the House of Representatives, when they're speaking, and who are they speaking to? Mr. Speaker. Mr. Speaker, Madam Speaker, in regard to the, you know, previous speakers come. Now, all the rest of the folks there get to listen, but you're, you're aiming your speech, and you're looking at the presiding officer. You're not looking at the person sitting next to you. You're looking at the presiding officer and speaking to them. Okay? Just that little bit, and I know that sounds strange, but just a little bit of formality like that will keep all this kind of nitpicky personality junk right out of your debate. And you'll focus on what's best for the kids of the school that's in front of you. That's the key. Always maintain a courteous tone. Try not to get out of hand, get, start getting pumped up. Take a breath before you speak. Uh, do you know who was really good at that was Benjamin Franklin? I'll tell you another story you'll love. This is the Constitutional Convention, seventeen eighty-seven. He was the oldest person there. Only men, he's the oldest man there, okay? He was eighty-seven years old.
Oh, that's young, man.
Yeah. Well, the other guys, you know, in those days, eighty-seven. Today, eighty-seven's young. Yes, young. But in those days, eighty-seven was old guy, right? And he was probably forty years older than, well, one second, he's in his fifties. He was the next oldest. Okay? So, what Franklin, he didn't say a lot of the convention, but when things got really tough, when they got arguing about something, it looked like the convention was about to bust wide open, Franklin would pull himself up. He didn't get up very easily. He was, he was not well, he was not at that point. He'd get up, and they would yield the floor to him as one of the most distinguished men there. And he would look around the room, and he would say, brethren, let us pray. And Franklin would start praying. And Madison, in his notes of the Constitutional Convention, records that on several occasions, Franklin prayed for forty-five minutes. Now, what was he doing? He was just letting all the adrenaline in the room come down. Get everybody to take a breath and calm down. Now, I'm just suggesting to have long prayers in the middle of your board meetings, but if you can stop and take a breath, or sometimes when things look difficult, it's time to take a five-minute break and get a pop, can of pop, you know? And just let all the adrenaline in the room come down. All right. Presiding officer generally doesn't enter into discussion on, on the merits of the question, although they can. You can't, by electing somebody president, muzzle them, or take away their right to vote. Okay? So if I'm in the chair, I'd kind of wait, let the, let the thing go around, and maybe I'm, what I want to say, somebody else will already say. I won't have to say it. But maybe I do need to say it. Okay, that's fine. And you can't, you can't just gavel through the matter, as we say. President just can't say, oh, I think we've had enough discussion on this, we're taking the vote. No. If you think there's, have been enough discussion, say, if there's no objection, we'll now take the vote on this matter. Or somebody moves the previous question. You know, if you're in the chair, you can make a motion in a small board, even though it's not a great idea, you can move the previous question. I prefer somebody else to do it.
If, if the, if the chair would say, don't you think we've had enough discussion on that? Then a member can say, Madam Chair, Madam President, I still move. Okay, second, is that an, a senile decision?
Yeah, the chair might say, seems we've had a lot of debate on this. Are you ready to vote? Kind of like that. And somebody might say, Madam President, I call the question, or I move the previous question. Or they might not, and nobody claims the floor? You put the vote. Nobody claims the floor. Okay? All right. Special rules for small boards. I'm gonna skip these, because there are some things that are not helpful in there. Okay. Postponing indefinitely allows you to kill a motion without a direct vote on it. Have you ever seen a motion that you didn't want to vote yes on, and you didn't want to vote no on? That's when you move to postpone it indefinitely. It avoids a direct vote on the question. Okay? These are particularly good for apple pie and mother resolutions, that you, you know, used to believe that, but you don't. Churches do this all the time. They'll approve, they'll, I wish we want to reconfirm our long-held belief in this, and that, and the other thing, and we don't believe this, that, or the other thing anymore. Okay? We've changed our minds about that, but we do don't want to say that. We don't want to say we're against that, so we postpone it indefinitely. Now, this is commonly used to refer something to a committee. And I will tell you, in a small board, I see an awful lot of boards who do committee work. You know, there's a lot of research that goes on before you get to a board meeting. Superintendent's doing work, you've got various faculty and student committees and board committees, and let this stuff get worked out there. You get to a meeting, and it doesn't look like you're coming easily to agreement, that's probably a signal that some more work needs to be done on this. It's a good idea to say, I move this be referred to a committee of two board members and the superintendent to do, or maybe you have some standing committees you can refer it to, you know? And let it go off, let it come back at the next meeting in better form. I guarantee you will. I did quite a little work with the Kansas City Public Schools for about five years. Do you remember when they used to be in the news for crazy stuff all the time? That's not me.
It is me.
Oh, I have a thing every night that tells me, put my watch on the charger. It goes off at seven o'clock. That's what it was. But as I was saying, I, you remember when you used to hear the Kansas City Public Schools were in the news for all kinds of crazy stuff, their board meetings? You don't hear that anymore, do you? I spent about five years working with them behind the scenes, and at the meetings, and get, and, you know, they don't need me anymore. I don't need to be there anymore. They learned how to work and play well with others. That was the idea. Okay? All right. Uh, postpone to a definite time. You can postpone any action until the next meeting, if you meet as often as quarterly. And you meet monthly, don't you? Generally, yeah, okay. So you can move something at this August meeting, you can postpone it to September, but not to October, because you're tying the hands of the September meeting. Can only postpone it to the next session, or sometime during this session, if you want. Now, if you want to postpone it just in a general way, it only takes a majority vote. But if you want to postpone it to a specific hour or time, and make it a special order so it comes up at that hour, then it takes a two-thirds vote. I can't imagine you would do very much of that, but it's very popular at conventions to have specific times for certain items of business. Uh, limit debate, this is the one Mr. Brooks asked a minute ago. I move that we limit debate on this matter to two minutes. Okay? Now, better than that is to have some kind of a standing rule, you know? Did you find it?
Yes, it's public BDA, and it's the first time a speaker speaks is limited to two minutes. The second time is one minute, and no discussion for any one item should, shall exceed twenty minutes.
Now, that's a very good, well-written rule.
And I'm prepared to send this to the board now, and I'm waiting in a week.
Now, you know what? You can suspend that rule. If, if you got going twenty minutes, and this was a really hot topic, and you really needed more time, then any member could say, I move to suspend the rules and allow an additional ten minutes, or whatever. And that's gonna take what vote? Two-thirds. We're messing around with people's rights again, see? To suspend the rules. It's not debatable. We can't say why we want to do it. Suspend the rules is not debatable. Just, it's just obvious. Okay? Uh, let me go on. Close debate, I've already told you about this, previous question. Lay on the table. Scrub that word out of your vocabulary. It's not helpful. Not helpful at all. And I'll tell you why it's not helpful. I think I got a picture. Do I have my picture here? No, I don't have it. So, all right, have you ever seen the British House of Commons on TV? They don't sit in a semicircle like the Congress does. They sit in tiered benches facing each other across a big table. You know how wide the table is? I love this. One sword length plus a foot. In the old days, they wore swords, you know? I'm not like that guy I was saying, take a swipe at him, you know? Well, you can't reach him, because the table's too wide, you know? Now they just take out a gun and shoot you, but, you know, they allow you that in the Commons. But they're sitting, looking at each other. And the speaker is sitting at the end of the table, and, you know, the groups are like that. Now, in the old days, when they didn't have copy machines and typewriters and all of that stuff, the only copy of the bill was in the hands of the speaker, who would read from this scroll as necessary. Now, let's suppose that the prime minister came suddenly to make an important announcement to the House, and you were in the middle of considering a bill. Somebody would say, oh, the president, the, the prime minister is here, I move that we lay the bill on the table, and by a majority vote, without debate, they would roll it up. And you know what he would do with it? He'd lay it right on the end of the table. That's where the whole lay on the table thing came from. And there it sat in plain view, and when the interruption was over, the, the prime minister had finished making his speech, somebody'd say, I move we take from the table, and they would resume it. Okay? The only time the motion to lay on the table, or some people say to table a motion, is in order, is when something more urgent has come up. Usually what they mean is, I want to table it to the next meeting. What do they really mean? Postpone it to the next meeting. I move we table it to the finance committee. Well, they mean they want to refer it to the finance committee, okay? Or they want, they think that by tabling it, that killing it without a direct vote on it, that's postpone indefinitely. Okay? So try to scrap, scrub that thing out of your vocabulary. It's not very helpful, but it's very, it's out there in the common usage in the wrong way. Okay? Now, you have consent agenda, I think? Yes, I recall you use consent agenda regularly. Uh, I noticed that in your rules, it says that on consent agenda, you know, you've got all those items, and the idea is that you give notice to folks in the consent agenda that we've got these ten items, okay? And I suppose it's the superintendent, the board chair, whoever decides, yeah, that looks like a, you know, a routine, non-controversial issue, and you put all those on the consent agenda. So when we come to that, and I always suggest to people that they approve the consent agenda first in the meeting, after the minutes, rather than last, although KCPS prefers to do it last. I don't know why, but they do. It works okay. Um, is, is say, you have, we have ten items on the consent agenda tonight. Does any board member wish any consent agenda item pulled off and put on the regular agenda? Pauses. Yes, Madam President, I'd like number six pulled. Thank you. And it's pulled. On the request of any one member, something comes off the consent agenda, and it goes on the regular agenda. Okay? Now, once you have allowed that, and let's say whatever's left on there, whether it's all of them or some of them, you should approve it by unanimous consent. Why? Because everybody had a chance to pull it if they were again, wanted to get something off of it, so there's no possible reason to vote against it. So why go through the roll call, vote, and all this? Just say, all right, if there's no, no one else who wants to pull anything else, the following items will be approved. They're approved by unanimous consent. Okay? That's the whole idea behind a consent agenda. Now, KCPS does something you might like, and I've never seen this one before, but it works for them. They send out their board agendas, let's see, their board meeting's on Wednesday, and they send them out on the previous Wednesday, okay? And by Friday, at the close of business, anybody who wants something pulled from the pre, uh, the consent agenda has to notify the superintendent's office. They want number six pulled, or number eight pulled. And then at the beginning of the meeting, they just say, the following items have been requested to be pulled, and they just pull them. And then they approve the rest by unanimous consent. You with me? It, that means it, it's obligation of board members to actually look at that dang packet and see what's in there, and be prepared, and call up, because you can't, in their rules, you can't wait till the last minute and do it. You've got to do it by Friday. Now, I don't know what your rules on that are, but something like that's not bad. Okay? If you, you normally meet on, is it this night or late? Thursday? So maybe it's Tuesday, you know, or maybe it's even Wednesday by five o'clock. You know, I don't know when the board packet goes out for you to look at. Maybe you use board docs. Yeah, so it's electronic and all of that. It's very easy for you to look at it and, and to get back to them and let us know. That way, it looks for the public like you've got your act together, you know? And we're not arguing over silly stuff. That's when people start to get upset with the board, when they seem like they wasting time all the time. Okay, I've said enough about consent agendas. I've even got a suggested rule that's in the materials that you might use. All this stuff's written down for you. Remember I told you majority means more than half? So if there were 19 voters, 10 is more than half. There are 20 voters, majority is 11, right? Okay, you just have to actually see. It's anything more than half. So if you have seven votes, three and a half is half, right? So four is a majority. Okay? If you only had five people present, a majority's two and a half, well, half is two and a half, right? So majority's three. It's anything greater than a half. Two-thirds means at least two-thirds. So if six board members have voted, it takes four votes to be two-thirds. Okay? The only time you're going to ever use a two-thirds vote is if you're closing debate or messing around with the limits on debate, or somebody moves to suspend the rules. It's the only time you're going to need to use a two-thirds vote. You move, want to move the previous question, two-thirds vote. Want to limit debate to two minutes, previous question. You want to expand debate by an extra 10 minutes, two-thirds. You want to suspend the rules, two-thirds. Those are the only three things. Everything else is majority vote. Yes, sir?
What if I rescind it?
Oh, good. Believe it or not, I'm coming to bat. So let's talk about, oh, well, you know what a quorum is, right? You've got to have four members. We don't have to spend a lot of time on a quorum. Point of order. A point of order is any member feeling that an infraction of the rules has taken place. So let's suppose that President, I suppose the President, as someone makes a motion, the President forgets to ask for second and then states the question. Now, no debates began yet. It'd be in order for a member to say, "Mr. President, point of order?" "Yes." State your point. "Chair forgot to get the second. Thank you very much. The point is well taken. Is there a second?" Okay? Now, you have to raise your point of order at the time the infraction occurs, because later it's too late. So if the President forgot to get a second, states the question, and we've already gone down the road in debate, we've already got two people who want to talk about it. It doesn't make any sense to go back and make that point of order. Okay? You don't make them just for form. You make them because they impact the proceedings. All right? An appeal. Now, if the Chair makes a decision on a point of order, and you don't agree with it, you can appeal the Chair's decision, and the Assembly will vote, and it takes a majority vote against the Chair's ruling to change it. Okay? And the Chair gets to vote. All right? If you don't have enough information, you can request information. This is a fancy way to say you want to ask a question. Okay? Now, I know some boards that as they proceed through each item of business, they'll move it second it's stated by the Chair, and the Chair will say, "This is the time for questions." And all they do is allow informational questions. On line 13, does that mean $3,000 or $30,000? So these are informational questions, not, not a veiled debate. Okay? And then after the questions have been answered, a lot of times there isn't much debate once you get the questions done. But that's not what Robert says, but I know a lot of boards that do that and find it helpful. Okay? If you want information, you ask for it. If you don't know how to proceed in a parliamentary way, ask the Chair for help, because she's going to know.
But then sometimes my colleagues, it's like, well, can you have somebody else call that motion? When I knew the first time that, I was in the gray.
That's right.
I was being, as being kind and courteous.
That's right.
I didn't say you were wrong.
All right, a question of privilege. Now, this would be, I, I'm getting warm in this room, so let's say I'm a member of the board, and it's just really getting hot in here. It's really getting hot tonight, and I can't concentrate on what we're doing. It's too hot. Point, Mr. President, Madam President, I rise to a point of parliamentary privilege. State your point. "Madam Chairman, could we get the temperature turned down in here? It is too warm. I can't..." Or, "It's too hot. It's too cold. I can't hear." You know, maybe somebody's making noise in the back. Anything that interferes with your right to participate is an appropriate question of privilege, and the Chair would grant it graciously to fix that. Okay, now we come to reconsider and rescind. Reconsider allows you within certain time limits without notice to bring back an item for further consideration. What's the time limit?
Same meeting.
Same meeting. Okay? After that, forget reconsider. All right? Somebody has to have, of course, the purpose is to create hasty or ill-advised action, and a member who voted on the prevailing side has to move so that you know that at least one person's changed their mind. All right? Now, rescind. A motion to rescind allows the Assembly to change a previous action in whole, that's rescind, or in part, it's amend something previously adopted. So let's suppose that you adopt the school district budget. I suspect you have more than one opportunity in the year we have to amend that budget, right? A lot of buck, school districts do have to amend the budget. All right, that's an example of to amend something previously adopted. Now, so let's say we adopted the budget months ago, and now we need to make an adjustment to the budget. It's been sent out. Everybody's had noticed that they're going to do it. Okay? It only takes a majority vote to do it, and anybody can move it. Doesn't make any difference how you voted on the original budget. Anybody can move it. You could have been absent on the night they approved the budget. You can still move the amendment. Okay? Same thing with rescind. Rescind means to repeal, annul, you know, make it not, some previous action. So last month, you did something, and the community went nuts, and all you all got phone calls. Okay? And you thought, "We, we made a big mistake." So at the next meeting, first of all, you all have called the superintendent and the board chair, and you all have said, "Yeah, we've got to put that back on the agenda." And the agenda item says, "Rescind the action on whatever it was." And so, previous notice has been given. You've gotten the notice in the call of the meeting, right? So it just takes a majority vote of those present and voting to rescind the action or to amend the action. Maybe it's only part of it that has to be changed. Okay? Now, without notice, and you can't do this because of the sunshine law, so forget that. All right? It's going to take a two-thirds vote. But with notice, which you're going to do because of the sunshine law, or unless, there's an exception about unforeseen circumstances, Madam Attorney, I don't remember the wording, but I know there is one. Things that are emergencies or something, something like that. So, so, but you can resc, normally you give notice and you rescind it by a majority vote, or you amend it by a majority vote.
The key there is it should be listed on the agenda, that that's a possibility, prior to the meeting.
That's right.
Not something that just pops up the day of the meeting.
That's right, because I think then you're getting into something you haven't put on notice, and you're, my question would be if you're in violation of the sunshine act then, you know? Okay? Unlike reconsider, anybody can move it, and it only takes a majority vote if you've included it in the agenda and the notice of the meeting. Okay. Now, last few things. Standard order of business is generally you approve your minutes first. Some boards choose to approve minutes like only quarterly. I don't care. But I think you tend to forget what the minutes said if you wait quarterly. I'd do them every month. It was me. I do the last month, because I can't hardly remember what we did last month, let alone three months ago. Approve the consent agenda. If there are reports, you receive them. Now, remember, reports are just that. They are reports. Unless they have recommendations for action, there's no vote on a report. I remember watching some of your board meetings where you were voting to receive reports. No, 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 no. While you're hearing it, it's been received. Okay? As soon as the person makes the report, "Thank you very much for your report." Now, if there are action items in the report, of course, you have to vote on those.
Uh, Dr. Yon, I'm, I'm really, what page are we on? Because I'm...
Well, I don't know what page I'm on.
Okay, I, okay, I wanted to make sure, because I'm like, we were there.
We were there a minute ago.
Yeah, okay.
Usually, the report of the superintendent is in, might be included with the report, or it might be first or second. I don't, there's generally always a report of the superintendent. Then, regular business, whatever you've got in the agenda. Unfinished business. Unfinished business are things that were left undone when you adjourned last month, and you should put them back. Let's say it was a snowstorm come up, and you've got five items left on the agenda, and you have to go home. So put those five items as unfinished business on the next agenda. Okay? Or anything you postpone from this meeting to the next, that's unfinished business. Okay? There's no such thing as old business. Old business like old fish.
Sticks.
It sticks, yeah. Not good. And sometimes, school districts will have a general point about items that they would like to discuss at a future meeting. Some do that, some don't. Now, particular importance to Missouri school boards. A good school board uses parliamentary procedure as a tool and not as a weapon to frustrate your opponents. You know, that's not what it's about. It's about getting things done in an orderly manner. Courtesy and service and agreement on parliamentary principles beforehand will solve those problems. Second, assuring good public input does not mean that patrons get to interrupt the meeting. I don't know what your policy is on that, but a lot of boards have it. People sign up so many days ahead. They got so many minutes to address the board, and you do it at the beginning, or you do it at the end. I think it's better at the beginning. Some boards I knew do it both. I think that's an exceptionally bad procedure, because it just lets people sit there and fester and then want to get up and give you all kinds of stuff over what you just did, which is not really helpful. They don't get to just, excuse me, I want to say something about that. Now, if you don't believe me, go to Washington and sit up in the gallery of the House of Representatives and say, "Uh, just a minute, folks. I've got something I want to say about that," and see what happens to you. They're going to haul you out fast. You don't get, they're not members of the board, so they don't get to interrupt the proceedings. Best practice is to require those wishing to notify the office to do so at least a certain number of days ahead of time. Person speaking should be given uniform time limits. Public input is best at the beginning of the meeting. Before a motion is made, allow the superintendent or representative to elaborate. So call up the item, let the superintendent explain what the issue is, and then move the motion.
Let me go back to the, uh, someone appearing on the agenda. The President, the Chair called for, um, someone to speak, and you got two, and qualified it, two minutes. Uh, is it, is it, is it best to just let the person, he or she, make a statement with more comments from the board?
Oh, yeah. You don't want to make any, I mean, that, most comments, most boards would have an absolute rule. No response will be given to your comments on the night of the meeting, because you have to stop and think a little bit sometimes about that. Because, you know, initially, you might think it's a great idea, but there's a whole lot of information you didn't get, you know? So, yeah, I wouldn't do that. And I would have a limit on how long they get to speak, and usually, people are very good about it. They come to a microphone like this, they're talking to the board, and at a certain moment, the Chair says, "Wait until I take a breath," and said, "Thank you, ma'am. Your, your time is up." You know? And usually, they're happy to go sit down. I know one school board that has a, a traffic light hanging up in the front, and when the person's turn, turns to speak, it goes green, and when they got 30 seconds left, it goes yellow. And when the time's up, it goes red, and the microphone goes dead. That's a big district that's had a lot of trouble, so they had to elaborate on that. Only, only after the item is clarified should you accept a motion to approve an item. Recommended special rules. Items of business should be introduced by the superintendent or his or representative after which questions or clarification can be asked. Board members may speak up to. That's an example of a rule you could have about that. Sounds like you have already, Dr. Cargill, a pretty good rule. I didn't know that that one had been changed. After questions are answered, a motion to approve is then made. The board members can speak, and so on. Sometimes, when a proposal is perfectly cleared, all present, without objection, a vote can be taken by unanimous consent. That's a pretty good rule to actually write into your policy, even though Robert says that. It's not a bad idea to have it in your policy, Doc. I think this is the last page of the handout, of one on, on special things for school boards. And when a motion is offered, be particular about the wording. The item of business for the Assembly is the wording, not the concept. Be real particular about how it's worded. Avoid using the words "I so moved," because I say, "I so what?" You say, "I so moved." I say, "So what?" No, say what you mean. "I move that we amend, that we adopt the resolution number six." And then if you're going to read it, you read it.
So forget about the "I so moved" comment.
I forget that "I so moved" stuff, you know? Because, because, you know, the folks watching you don't know what you just moved. They really don't understand. I watched some of your meetings a while back, and first of all, the, you know, I'm, I'm putting, I'm not putting this to my mouth, and sometimes they don't understand what's being said when they're watching, and they particularly won't understand "I so moved," because they don't know what, unless you read the whole motion, and then the person says, "I so moved what?" Okay, that makes a little sense. All right? After a report by the superintendent or staff, a full and complete motion still should be offered to adopt any recommendations, not to accept, adopt, receive, or approve the report. The report is the report. It's what it is. Okay? When desiring to change the substance of a motion, remember amendments are changes in wording, not changes in concept. We've already talked about this. You should, the minutes should always be what was done and not what was said. So I always tell secretaries when I do their workshop at MSBA, "You never want to put in your minutes, you know, Mr. Johnson arrests, dressed the board wearing an ugly green suit." You know, your opinion, it doesn't go in the minutes. Just the record of what was done. And, and it's not the secretary's job to have to record all the text of what you said. Secretary doesn't have to be a stenographer. You want a record of every word said, you hire a court reporter, or you tape it and have it transcribed. That's not the job of the secretary. Now, we talked about executive session minutes earlier, right? Were you, when are you going to prove those? In executive session. Otherwise, they're out there, you know? So you always want to do that. You can have a time of informal consideration. Let's suppose we have an item where we just need to talk together for a while. The Chair could say, or any member could say, "I request a few moments of informal consultation." Chair would say, "Is there any objection to that?" If not, we just drop all the parliamentary procedure, and we just talk for a few minutes, say, for five minutes. We just have a little roundtable discussion. Then we go back into formal proceeding. Sometimes, that's a very effective thing to do, to get people pulling together. They just need to talk a little bit. Okay? That's called informal consideration. Okay, listening to your recordings, as I said, online, sometimes it's difficult for members of the public, I think, to hear. Sometimes, there's background noise, all kinds of things. Honestly, I don't know how you fix that. It may be that you're, that you're, I noticed it seemed to be better recently, but I didn't know you had moved. It may be you have better sound equipment here than you had at the old facility, you know? But that's something to pay attention to. When a board member asks a question, the question should be complete. Then the Chair designates the person to answer. You know, what, what I see happening sometimes is they ask a question, and you, they get an answer, but that leads them to ask another question, which gets an answer, and then pretty soon, we're down the road 15 minutes. Ask your question. What is it you want to know? And get the answer for it. It's not a kind of debate. Minutes should be approved by unanimous consent rather than going through all that formal voting. Those are examples of how you might do that. Thank you. Secretary will note the correction. Are there any other corrections? Hearing none, the minutes are approved, is printed, or is corrected. Members of the board should avoid addressing each other directly. All debate or questions should be directed to the Chair. These are just things I've noticed watching your board. Okay? The consent agenda process is non-standard. It probably needs to be reviewed, the way you're doing it. You're voting on it. Why vote on it? Let somebody pull it, and then by, approve the rest by unanimous consent. There's no action required on reports. I've said that over and over.
I, I think recently with the consent items, since we've been working in committees, that the information, the committees, the committees, and all, all public committees have looked at the information. Boards have, board members are encouraged to read the board docs prior to submit any questions regarding those commit, uh, those, uh, consent items, and then I think we've been approving them all at once.
Well, that's, that's a great way to proceed. Uh, you know, I can't encourage you enough to use committees. Use your committees and let them get the legwork done, and then you come together and you're ready to make a decision. Okay, number seven. Open comment time is, for anyone, is not a recommended procedure. There ought to be a time for public input. They ought to have to sign up ahead of time, and they ought to have a timeline. Okay? Uh, you know, I don't see as much of that as it used to be, but it used to be you guys were really informal in the way you did things. And what happens with informality is it breeds contempt. We get informal, and we get sloppy. We get informal, and we get sloppy, you know? I'd stick with the formality, the formal way to make a motion and second it, debate it, vote on it, and stick to the agenda. Secretary, by the way, I saw you do that tonight. That's something else I've seen your Board do a lot of times. It's the secretary's job to call the roll, not the President's job to call the roll. President says, "We're ready for the vote." Secretary will call the roll. Secretary calls the roll and records it. And then, you know, generally, the secretary is sitting right next to the President, and you can see, and you announce the result. There are four in favor and three opposed. Okay? And that's my, that's my signal to finish. I would like to, I know we've answered a lot of questions tonight, but if there's anything I haven't touched on that you want to ask a question about, this is a real good time to do it.
This has been very helpful.
Now, let me just tell you, I am available to you if you, as a board chair, or Dr. Cargill knows this, as superintendent, any board member. I'm a consultant for MSBA. You're an MSBA member of a school district, okay? You have a problem, on the front of all that stuff has got my name, my address, my email. I would much prefer you try to email me your problem and let me give you a written response. Because if you call me, I'm going to listen, and I'm going to say, "Would you put that in writing for me?" Because what I find is when I give answers orally, people only get part of the answer, or they only share the part that they find helpful, and not the other part. So, you know, even if I'm, like, this summer, I was in Russia for about eight weeks. And I wasn't getting any phone calls, but I answered email every day. I had a whole bunch of email questions from different school districts. You know when I get the most? April. Why? Reorganizing the Board, right? And you're doing teacher contracts, right? I get most of those questions then. Lots of them then, and then just odd, you know, three or four boards a month will have a question or an issue. And it doesn't have to be just the Board President, the superintendent. If you have a question about something, call me or email. Glad to help. Yes, Ms. Graves?
I have a comment about Board. I think that we sit down the agenda a week ahead of time, and I think that our Board meetings will go smoother if people would actually lead the agenda. If they have questions, they can contact the superintendent or the Board President, because school board meetings are just about the business of a school board. I think oftentimes, our school board meetings are longer than what they should be, because we're not, many of us are not leading the agenda, do not ask any questions until we get to the meeting, and I think that drives us as a board.
Well, that's very good suggestion. And I'll tell you, one way that could help that is have an ending time for your meetings. I don't believe in Board meetings that go all night, and you're there past midnight. How can you be making good judgments, you know, when you're tired like that? You know, if your Board meeting starts, what's typical, you start at?
Six thirty.
Six thirty. So you start at six thirty. I don't know, a school Board in the state of Missouri can't get their business done by eight thirty. You know, couple hours ought to be it.
We get out by eight thirty, nine o'clock. We get out by eight and twenty, eight thirty.
Do your best, you know, to try to, and this is good counsel that Ms. Graves has given. If you see something in that agenda, you don't understand it, pick up the phone, call the superintendent, call the board chair, and say, "Tell me about that. What is that about?" Get the information you need ahead of time. Then you don't have to go through all that in the meeting. Now, I know we're all busy. Sometimes you just don't have a chance to do that. So then you have to do best. But I just really want to emphasize, I'm available to you. It doesn't cost a dime if you pick up the phone and call me or email. You know, I'll give you the best answer I can. If I need to give you a quote from Roberts, it allows me a chance to look it up and put the quote in the email, so you've got it. I have school district attorneys call me all the time. Because a lot of times, they're the guys on the spot that everybody thinks knows parliamentary procedure. And Mrs. Johnson will tell you, there's nothing legal breakable about parliamentary law. We call it parliamentary law, but it's not law. It isn't, you know? The only reason Roberts is accepted is because it's become accepted. Everybody uses it. And so it's become kind of the parliamentary standard for the country.